Public comment this evening. No one has signed up and stayed for that part of the meeting. So I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:15. This is the Independent School District Number 832, a regular board meeting on Thursday, September 23rd. We'll start with all the attendance, please.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion.
Thank you.
Second. If you're so close, a move by Kevin, second by Carrie. Any comments on the agenda? Any discussion? Those who favor the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, in our consent agenda, we are access to a board book. Looking for a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
By Kevin, second by Tony. Any discussion on consent agenda or events to poll for discussion? Any discussion? Those who favor the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the presentations and recommendations. We're starting with the technology update. Patrick is running it for us.
Sorry, lots of moving parts tonight. Some audio issues.
Because we don't have to be presentation and speaking.
Whatever it takes. All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you. It's nice to be back at the start of the year talking about technology and the technology updates. We've had a long ways in the last eighteen months, two years. We're really excited about the things that teachers and students are going to be doing in the classrooms. So what we want to talk about today is just our technology on the district, some innovation, planning that we're doing, and then a little update. Last year, we gave you an update on the number of devices we had handed out. Last year, we got them out just in time for school. This year, we were a couple of weeks ahead, which was great. But this year, we ran about the same with student iPads. Our staff network will have, they have devices. Student textbooks are quite a bit, and we still have most of our staff who are also using Chromebooks. Last year, we purchased about seventy hotspots to give out to families. So families are needing help at home with different, with their different internet needs. This year, we're down to five. So what we'll be doing is moving the hotspots back to the schools so that students can check them out on a nightly basis or a short-term basis. So maybe they're going on a trip, maybe their internet is down, maybe they can just go in and check those out. The big conversation for us this year is about innovation, and what are we going to do differently now? What are we going to do through this? What are we going to have all these new experiences? What kind of teachers do to transform their teaching, to transform the learning experiences for students? How can we take things from paper pencil and make them more interactive, more engaging for students? Because really, that's what excellence is. We want more engaged, students are leading their own learning. That's where we want to be. So two examples of videos for you. This one is Mrs. Mahmoud, who's a first grade teacher at Wildwood. And this is a project that she's been doing with the students. She started it last year where she took a science project and moved it to the iPads and CSAT. Let's see how the audio looks.
Hello, I'm Mrs. Mahmoud, a first grade teacher at Wildwood. I am excited to have some of my students share how we are using iPads and CSAT. But first, I'll share a little bit about how we have transformed our insect science unit by incorporating technology. We have been using an interactive CSAT Science Notebook to guide our learning. In the past, this work was done paper pencil. Today, students have been engaged in their observations of new worms and have been able to add photographs of their insects that they're caring for. In addition, students use an interactive CSAT feature like voice-to-text to add labels or even add a voice recording explaining their thinking. Our notebook also includes some interactive assignments where students are able to move text labels to name the parts of an insect or different stages of the lifecycle. This is such a first grade family feature. Each label has an added voice recording. Students that may need help reading these words can tap to listen to the word being read aloud. This engaging notebook helps me as a teacher quickly assess my students' learning. If a student needs extra support, I can check it in CSAT and give extra feedback for them to listen to and tell them to adjust their work as needed. Once this assignment is submitted, families can also see what we are learning in first grade through the Connected CSAT Family App. This homeschool connection is so important. CSAT has helped us redefine the way we are sharing our learning here at school. A paper pencil packet has served this purpose in the past, but this interactive science notebook has been fun, engaging, and lets learners share their voice.
This is my son, Jimmy. Let me show you how to take the picture on my mom. So you have this. And then, um, the picture. And then, if you want to find the location, you can hit that. You can hit that, and then you can look further here. This is my child's notebook, and we finished all the pages in less than a week. So this is where my adult, my people were first, like a kid. So yeah, I'm going to try to do that. This is, I had to figure out where the pieces go. So this is the abdomen, so the mouth, forearms, head, antenna, and legs.
So what you're seeing there is us moving away from technology being an event, where the technology is coming in, and that's the focus of what people are learning or what they're doing. And it's just becoming a tool. The kids used to be a paper pencil. Now they pull out the device. Not only are they having something they can share in the class, we just send it home to their parents, but they're sharing this on CSAT. They're producing and sharing their research. Other people are able to see it. The other students are able to see it and interact with it. And that's where we want to, we want to get, we want to get that deeper knowledge and deeper utilization. This is Mr. Oswald. He's one of our math teachers over at the high school. He has been doing some work, he has Chromebooks in his class, but he's also doing some work with the math teachers to utilize iPads and the Apple pen to give some feedback and move students' learning a little bit deeper with those tools in class.
The iPad as a tool and the stylus allowed us to take work that was submitted digitally from students and quickly use the iPad and stylus to provide personalized feedback on their digital work. I could open up a PDF document from a student that had mathematical solutions, and I could look at those solutions and write, write on the student's document, my notes, my feedback, my support. And the student would then have access to those notes almost instantaneously or as soon as I submitted it back to Google Classroom. Timely, formative assessment, which informs learning, has a huge impact for student growth.
All right. Awesome job, Caitlin. Caitlin has a great example of solving the problem, so let's get an idea. And notice how Caitlin does a great job in this step of showing Part B is writing a logistic equation and determining that the place at which the derivative.
One thing Mr. Oswald talked a lot about was just how student engagement is up, but also teacher engagement is up. The teachers are really into these new lessons they're doing, the new ways that they can teach, how the quality of discussions that they're having with students about the work that they're doing. To that extent, it's the teachers, because it's moving it to another level. They're able to give them some feedback, and that's what we really all expect now quite often, but they're actually just giving feedback of right or wrong. They're giving quality, authentic feedback. But it's a process like, what could we have done different in the process? Because really, that's what math is about, and I'm not a math teacher, so that was a bold statement, but it seemed like a math thing to say. I have a couple more examples from Mr. Kazaa, who's a physics teacher at the high school. He's doing a lot with Chromebooks and simulations. These are things that, and not just at one thing, these are things in the classroom where students can run and rerun different simulations in a timely way that they couldn't do in the past, some prototyping. They're looking at homework differently instead of concentrating so much on the homework. They're able to have more deep discussions about the work that students were doing. Back to the side here, let me see if I can move this. Oops, a little too far. His name is Source Studies. She was using a program called Napad where she can use video. And video is probably one of the best tools our teachers picked up last year and our students, the way they can utilize video to share answers, to share process, to share just the work that they're doing, their creativity. And that goes along with our strategic plan. We want kids to pursue their passions, we want to remove barriers, all those things. And having these devices are letting students be more creative and have some agency and drive their own learning. So some of the other things that we're doing this year, we need to get some school and some student technology teams together. We need to talk about what's unique in each of the buildings, what are some of their unique needs, where are they at as a staff? We need to talk as a district, where do we embed the districts so we do have some consistency? It's difficult for parents when all their kids are in different schools and they, there's different way to get information, different expectations with the technology. Alternative training, we started to talk a lot about competencies and what we want all of our students and our staff to be able to do so they can work efficiently and effectively. We've had a new programs we tried in the last year. Now we need to vet those and find out which are the best ones, which are the ones we want to continue, which ones double up a little bit, and how we can do that better. We'll be using some additional funding that's still out there, some grants, some federal discounts. Data security is huge. While we're helping students do so much online, we want to make sure that our data is safe. We want to make sure that our systems are safe, so we're doing some ongoing training with that and then some system upgrades. We need to restructure the technology staff because we need to work differently now. Everybody has devices, we can't put staff in the old positions they were in, they need to be more mobile, they need to be more available to the students. And then the money, that's part of the capital projects, money for technology, that expires this year. That's funding that we rely on. And we talk about having excellence in education, having that engagement. That comes back to that reliable funding, that we have systems that work, we have training and support for the staff, we have the tools that they can use, we have the ability to reform with new tools when they come up, and we can do that when we have ongoing funding. A couple of other things that you can see very different this year, we have an additional halftime technology integrationist. So that's a person who's in the schools working directly with the teachers, not only how to fix things, but how to use them better in class, how to use them with the students even better. We've looked at web filter. Last year, we started to send devices home, and we want to make sure that student devices are filtered the same way our moms are at school, and now that's happening for both the iPads and Chromebooks. And we know some other changes that don't seem particularly too exciting, but they're really exciting to me. We're talking about password protocols and changing passwords. We're talking about multi-factor authentication and how that keeps our data safe. Maybe I'll stop later, we can talk. But that's how we keep our data safe. Those are the three things that we can do, just change how we work so that we are keeping those systems, keeping the systems safe for everyone. What we're doing is adequate. We're doing a good job, and teachers are doing a really, a really good job. But they have new ideas, they have new visions of other work. And in order for that to happen, we really need to have that consistent ongoing funding. As I said, the capital, the technology funds for the Capital Projects Levy for Technology that ends in 2021, at the end of the school year, 2122 school year. If there isn't a renewal, that's $742,000 going towards devices, going through tools, going through staff, infrastructure, security, that we need to find in other areas. We've already renewed that excellence and that innovation, we're starting to see it just happening in pockets, smaller groups who do it, the really motivated teachers, but then all of our kids aren't getting that same experience. They're not getting that excellence that we talk about, that excellent education. The tech becomes more of an event and less of a day-to-day tool. It's just something that we rely on. So there's information up here about embedding, we have a website for the Capital Projects Levy for Technology, please take a look at that. And also we have a community meetings coming up on October 11th and 19th. Those are both at the middle school. We do the presentation, and we can talk about the failed authentication if you want to. So there's lots of good things. But again, this is really important to us, and to continue the work that our teachers have started or students have started, so. Any questions? Just catching my breath after running around, so.
Go ahead, tell anyone that care after that, me and Tony.
So I just see what's happening in the rapidness of the change, and Matt Oswald doing the math class. It gets me to want to go back and take math again. I mean, I'm just like jazzed. I mean, to have someone be able to give you just about real-time instruction, give you feedback on how you're doing, that's just, that's amazing. But I think I was most struck by what you said about how teaching and learning, there needs to be this, this change that benefits students, that helps teachers further their craft and helps students learn in a way that they couldn't do with pencil and paper. To me, that's the, that's the crux of all this, is how do we, how do we envision a future that we don't know, but this is the pathway to get there? And so when I heard that, that it's like, okay, this is it. How do we empower the teachers to teach it as they haven't before, which would be beneficial to the students of a lot of these schools? I mean, that's a, it's a great talking point.
It must be what I believe. If it doesn't work, whether it's physical device, the tool, the internet, if it doesn't work, people aren't going to use it, they're going to stop using it, and that's the point where you stop moving forward.
Thank you, Caitlin. Probably go ahead.
Patrick, a couple of things. So first of all, I saw so many things in your presentation of skills that employers are looking for in our kids leaving school, things like being collaborators, being able to critically think, being able to use the technology, be proficient in it. Those are just sort of expectations now of leaving K-12 public education. And so it makes me worried when I see that $742,000 dedicated towards technology funding if that renewal does not pass, for all of the things that our students are missing out on. I saw some really great things in there that as a mom of four boys, the home-school connection, instead of saying, well, how was school today, and I only get fine, and what did you do, and I get nothing, and I know we're not doing nothing in our schools, but sometimes that's what the kids give you for an answer. I just love seeing that, like through the CSAT Family App, being able to see some of the things that the students are doing in school, so I thought that was great. You know, the immediate feedback, I remember being in school myself, how long I'd have to wait for some results on homework or tests or things like that, but formative assessment, daily checking. And then I think probably the thing that, one bullet point that you said, but I don't know if everyone caught, that I got super excited about was the student technology team and how we can lean on our students for their expertise in the technology and build their skills. And these are skills that blend sort of almost an internship for, and I've seen this happen in other schools that I'm working with, where students are given this opportunity to gain that expertise and skills that will help them in a career that they might look forward to doing later on. So in a student technology team, I can't wait to see what that looks like, so thanks for sharing that.
Thank you, Tony. Go ahead.
My colleagues brought up excellent points. I love the presentation and some, all the different things that are going on. And I can attest to, I actually got to go visit the schools when they were doing the new home project, and I can say that I've never had first graders rush me over to show me a paper packet. They rush me over to the iPads and they're showing me their scientific journals. And I'm a scientist myself, and it just spoke to my heart where they're going through, taking pictures, and they could go through the entire lifecycle of their name, the name room, and trust me, I don't run about five or six different names that day. And it was amazing to see the engagement our students were having with that project and doing science. It was really good to see.
I do have one question going all the way back to the hotspots. Are we tracking the use of that hotspots in case, I'm a little worried about connectivity issues for students, that we have all these technologies, and if they're being used to a higher level, do we have plans to increase that if needed? Are we tracking that information?
So we're not tracking actually on the hotspots, how much they're being utilized, for going by family needs. So we've had some families who have contacted us, and we also have our support staff that we rely on heavily, who are out working in the community with the families and who can advocate for the families, that if they do see a need for whatever reason, that we can get them the support that they, that they need. So we have several devices that were checked out last year for the entire year, almost seventy devices. This year, we have five that we know more needs as the, as the year pops up. And then we have some people who contacted us just because they've need, and the internet hasn't started yet, and there's always little issues that we've all experienced when we pop up, these inconveniences. It is a much bigger deal when you have an assignment, it's due the next day, you have work you need to do. So we want to make sure that we can support that, and we'll grow with that as we need to.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's great, you're on. You're right. Do you want to open this? Your secretary wants to answer.
Oh, it's okay. I'm Torey, I'm Torey, I'm the student representative this year, and I'm super excited to start. My question, as Mr. Oswald kind of talked about, was the student technology teams, are they used for feedback, or are we like teaching students how to work with computers, and then like who are they open to? Are they open to all students or just like students in the AV club kind of thing?
Yeah, it's a great question. So starting, so where are we starting with this year? So I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. I can tell you my vision would be that we're not just pulling from SLC, we're not just pulling from some of those programs, all great programs, but sometimes we pull from the same, the same spots. This is something that we want to pull students in from a variety of areas, because students have a variety of different experiences, and that's what we want to hear about. So I see it as kind of an advisory group, whether they see throughout the school, what's missing, what's working well, what can we do different, what ideas do they have? But then the next step beyond that is Mrs. Oswald, the media specialist at the middle school and high school. She's starting an actual tech intern program, where they'll be in the media center at both the middle school and high school at different times throughout the day just to help students do some, some troubleshooting, and then also point out some maybe tech skills that the kids don't have, that the other students don't have, that they can help them get. So we want to go out and then look for some feedback from the students on that as well. So we haven't posted anything about that one yet, but we'd rather everybody get started a little bit.
Any other? Go ahead, Joe.
I'm also curious, Torey, if you have any examples of any, sorry, I don't mean to leave you on the spot, but if you had any other examples of, from your experiences in life?
Yeah, I actually have Miss Kazaa, who's a calculus teacher, second hour, so I definitely get to experience that mix of online, we submit our assignments online, and we can give us feedback. Sometimes in class, we'll be doing a review, so if you're going over through chapters, let's review it, and we'll be using some online programs. Mr. Oswald is particularly fond of Desmies, which is like an online graphing, he talks about it all the time. It's beautiful math, as he likes to say. So he definitely incorporates that. And then I also get to help out in the Wildwood schools through my psychology and the field class, so I do get to see that interaction with like little kids, and they're taking testing iPads and that kind of thing, and they're able to, you know, communicate with the teacher through the device, and it's, seems like it's working for the teachers. So I definitely do get to experience that during school.
Patrick, thank you so much. I know in our weekly newsflash that I went home to famous electronically, we see lots of other good examples coming up of our teachers using technology and other classroom projects that happen, so I was imagining I'm going to have a hard time picking just two to home at, because there is so much going on in our building. So thank you for picking two for us to know, and thank you, principals, for highlighting what's happening in our schools with technology, it's very helpful.
Just real quick, I also just want to point out, I have a really good team that I'm really proud of, and they do really great work for the staff and the students. So we have five people that appreciate the district supporting us that way and going as we need to grow. And I also had some additional help this summer because this was needed, us how to go through all these devices. So I really appreciate that support as well to be able to process all of those. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. The upper presentation that we have tonight is summer learning update. Jen and Suzie are reading that. I'm supportive, thanks for asking, principals. We have the whole team, I have all the questions. Thank you for having us here. I'm really excited to be able to share work that I had no part in, but we're able to celebrate the great work that my mom and dad have been doing. So our goal tonight is to share with you some of the work from this year. So we're going to touch on a funding overview and then focus in on an overview of the programming, our intentions, and what actually happened. We'll do a pit stop in what we did with Kinder Start, and then what are some next steps, and there'll be a sneak peek of what's happening, what's coming around in October. So typically, like the slide deck says, summer programming is funded through targeted services. And this year, with some additional federal dollars, we were able to expand on our own with the opportunities that we offered to our students. We knew that there was an impact to our kids because of COVID, and we wanted to take advantage of anything and everything we could do to support kids, and it started this summer. So our goals for summer learning were to extend opportunities so that students could practice their learning. We wanted to minimize that summer aggression, students going backward over the summer, or stab moving for those kiddos who may be rubbing as much as would help that they would do over the summertime. And then equally important, we wanted to maintain those connections that we have with kids, and we're focusing on the social, emotional, learning opportunities. Did you want to talk about this one? Is this one?
I think that's you.
Okay, I get to talk about this one too. So we really wanted to make sure that we were focusing in on kids. So we'll see our chart here that Wildwood, we had eighty-five kids participate, and the next slide will show that this is a significant difference in what we've seen in the past. We had ninety-four kids participate. The middle school, which typically didn't have summer programming, had sixty-three kids participate. And eighty-one students at the high school were able to earn credits in lots of different areas.
Thanks, Jen. I want to talk a little bit about how it looked different this summer than it has in a typical summer program. We gave you a five-week schedule instead of a four-week. We added an extra hour, so we went 2.5 hours of daily instruction. We had paraprofessionals and graduate students helping our students out, which was really a great experience on all levels. We had a total of one hundred and seventy-nine students, and then the big draw was we had complimentary breakfast and transportation was provided, so that allowed almost any student that wanted to be part of that program to be part of that program, which is really great.
At the middle school, I was
At the middle school, as Jen had shared earlier, summer programming at the middle school has not been something that has happened traditionally in the past, but that it had this year. So for us, it was, it was new. We were able to break up our summer program into sort of two distinct periods of time. A two-week program focusing on math, and then a two-week program that focused on literacy and those skills. And the other thing that was really interesting, it was great to hear feedback from our teachers, not only as, I think as Jen highlighted on the earlier slide, those relationships and the connections. Our English teachers that were providing books to take home for students over the course that they would keep for the summer, that were personalized around their unique interests and areas of passion. And so that way there was something, you know, unique for our kids to have as well. And then again, I think just the overall targeted nature of our programming this year, really highlighting, pulling on that resources from the spring, our data, as well as teacher feedback to, to really kind of hone in on those unique skills that we wanted to sort of increase or help bridge some of those gaps that students were experiencing. And again, both in math and also in those our reading and literacy skills.
At the high school level, one thing I'm going to talk about a lot is those credit recovery pieces for graduation. But what I want to talk about is really what was very different programming for summer, where typically students would come in and you would take one or at the maximum, two classes at the high school level. And it'd just be packets or an online computer program. And you'd do it from start to finish. And this year it was much more targeted support. And so a student wasn't essentially going from 0% to that 60% passing piece. What students were doing is they were focusing on a learning that they missed out on or did not attain during the school year. And so it was broken down, targeted for them, and then supported through those building of relationships too at the high school level. We also did two separate sessions, one with transportation and one without, to accommodate the different students. And the same thing as the elementary in the middle school, with that breakfast being provided. But the big focus, which has obviously carried into the beginning of this year and the goal throughout this year, is the building of those relationships. And again, we had students that were all distance learning last year, and we got them to come into summer school to be able to work through some of those issues and some of that anxiety piece, and get them to focus on that learning piece. And so I think that was a really big step for some of those kids.
I'm Susan Prather, principal of O H Anderson. And I just wanted to share a little bit about our kindergarten through fifth grade assessment days that we had the first two days of school. So during these assessment appointments that kids had, they had an opportunity to really meet their teacher, get to know them as individuals. And then they did some reading assessments. So the teachers had kind of their baseline where they were as readers, where their strengths, and where some opportunities for growth for them. During these days, it also, we also had childcare for families. And we had probably about 60 kids at each bedroom with childcare. We heard a lot of positive feedback. At the PTL meeting, one of the things I heard is parents had said they loved those days. Kids felt so connected to their teachers. It will reduce the anxiety for the start of school. They were also happy because, teachers were very happy because they had those connections with students. So they've already built that connection already, one-on-one, get to know them as individuals, but also to know them as readers. They can start that small group instruction soon. So they're not needing to do that assessment like they had done in the past during the school day. So it's, there's a very positive reflection both from students and families and teachers.
It is me. This year, Community Education partnered with Wildwood Elementary with assistance and support of a relief grant to provide Kinder Start, which was a fully getting ready for kindergarten program for students who had little to no experience in a school setting. We have never had this program before. We did it five days a week from eight to noon. And some of the activities that they did was school instruction. They had the ability to check out the lunchroom, to know what to do when you get sick. They do it as a treasure hunt. And they'll walk around the school and visit all the different places. And they also, I'm sure that to meet Mr. Briski and some of the staff. The other part that we talked about was social emotional learning, what a good friend looks like, how it feels, what it sounds like, listening to others while sharing, helping clean up. And the last time there was obviously choice time within the classroom to explore and learn and work together. One of the big things we were able to have, Mrs. Annie Erbin, she's a kindergarten teacher at Wildwood, she was the instructor for that class for us. So she was able to work with Stephanie, our early childhood coordinator, on what things we had, we had been working on in preschool and what things we wanted to work on so students were ready to come to kindergarten.
So as we look at moving forward, and like I said, I'm giving you a sneak peek as to next month where we'll be doing our World's Best Workforce Report. We want to make sure that we're looking at multiple levels of data to help inform where we go next. So one of the things we need to know about our MCA's, the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, is that is one indication of the health of our system. And as we expected, we were in COVID, and the health of everything is just a little bit different. And so we definitely saw a change in our data. And we'll talk about that next month. More important than the MCA data, we want to look at those local assessment pieces, like the information that was collected during the MCA's or the assessment days that Suzie talked about, but also our map testing, our individual map testing that we do in the fall at the middle school, fast bridge assessments that we collect at their elementary. Those data points are more painted to individual kids and help us better understand the opportunities for growth. Even better than those local assessment is the individual student data that we collect on a day-to-day basis. Those are the pieces that really help us understand how are kids making progress toward the standards in each class that they take and the learning that they participate in. So we need to look at all of those points of data, and that's what helps us make appropriate decisions about next steps. So part of what I will talk about next month is how we've taken a look at that data and the goals that we're setting and the action plans, which are so much more important than the goal setting, to say, here's what we're going to do on a day-to-day basis with our kids in school to help them continue to grow. I did want to make sure that I pointed out that Barb and I collaborated on an article about appeared in the World Press. So if you're interested in taking a peek at that, you go right ahead. And that, I think, is the end. And we just wanted to make sure that you know that in summer of 2022, which is so far away right now, we're going to make sure that we take a look at what worked really well in this year's summer programming and bear on that, because we want kids to have great experiences. So we are all here for whatever questions that you might have for us.
Questions?
I just have a clarifying question. Is the Wildwood program called All Stars? Or is that a different program?
Yes.
Okay. So then I'd like to, I don't even know how I'm trying to say, like, support it anywhere. I am a member of NHS and also one of the human resources, like officers. And this year we had NHS members going over to Wildwood and helping teachers out to get their hours because they hadn't completed them, but also just to kind of help teachers, you know, with the classrooms. And I don't think I heard a single person say, oh, this was terrible. Like, I had a lot of students come back to be like, I really liked it. I really liked hanging out with it. I got the connection through the showers. So I definitely hope NHS continues that, but it just goes to show how much the school did for students during that time. So.
Thank you.
That feeling was reciprocated by the teachers.
Awesome.
That was awesome.
That's good. Really good to hear.
Other questions or comments from board members? Go ahead, Julie.
Well, I would just like to thank you for sharing all of this information. It seems like the public has been interested in how we're dealing with some of the learning loss. And I think this should answer a lot of questions from many people. So thank you. Great detail.
How were the students chosen, for lack of a better word?
So I can, I can share the elementary level. We look at multiple data points, just like she was kind of sharing, multiple data points. And we look and say, who are the most, maybe kiddos meeting those data points? So that's what we did at the elementary level. We looked at what are those data, and a lot of the kiddos, were the same kiddos that might receive extra support during the winter, during the school year as well.
I can speak, I can speak to the middle school. It's very similar to what we would do, what Suzie was mentioning, at O H and at Wildwood. We're looking at our spring data collection, whether that was from our spring NVA assessments, looking at the results of, you know, assessments throughout their, their content area courses as well, to be able to identify and then invite and target those individual students.
And students at the high school, where it was determined if they didn't receive a passing grade, so if they'd received it unsatisfactory, they were invited to summer school. And again, it was part of that credit recovery piece. But there was a lot of targeted learning with those learning experience pulled right out of their regular ed classes.
Go ahead.
This is wonderful. It was a wonderful presentation. But many times we see individual things going on at any given school, but they have a full team. So that we have our Kinder Start kids all the way up through high school. I think it's just, it's nice about to see that and add some, a better understanding from my perspective on what's being done. The Kinder Start thing does sound really intriguing to me. I think, I think that is going to be very helpful going forward for kiddos to get better for Wildwood and then later to see Suzie. So thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Tony, go ahead.
Just one question on that Kinder Start program. Since it's new, is there a plan for follow-up to evaluate how ready we were able to help support these students to get into kindergarten or evaluate that?
We don't have any formal system with that yet, but I do know that Mr. Briski and myself and Stephanie will probably be checking in with those kindergarten teachers to see how the beginning of the year went and seeing the target of how they would, based on where they want them to be coming into kindergarten, I guess. You know, it's really a lot of the social emotional, but then you see the literacy pieces we're looking at.
Thank you.
So with the K5 assessment days, one of the biggest hurdles in talking about that over the years and trying to implement that program was there was a big concern about childcare. And it was always seen as a huge barrier. And so I'm very impressed that we overcame that barrier and offered that to all families who wanted it, because that was a big piece for our community. We've heard a lot from our community about that childcare piece. So it was really nice to hear. So thank you for finding a way to make that work, because that's a lot of families. And so it makes a huge difference. The other thing I want to thank you for is in thinking about other hurdles, many districts really struggle with the childcare services and things because of busing. And transportation is usually not included, and transportation is very expensive. So as we think about the program this summer, I'm understanding as much of the funding has come from COVID-related funds. And do we have plans or ways to continue some of these things that overcome the barriers for families? Because those funds are temporary, right? And so we've been very careful and transparent with how we've been spending our funds. But how do we manage these barriers after those funds are gone? And that's my question maybe to answer tonight, because that's a really good question. But I'm sure something else, thinking about it, I think the importance we were forward to think about that. We've really done some wonderful things for kids because of those funds. But we need to keep doing those things. And how do we make that happen? So thank you for finding solutions to barriers that are big for many districts across the state and in our community, what we thought we couldn't overcome. And it happened. So thank you.
Stacy, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, you touched on my point. So it was basically, it sounds like we will continue to do this. We have a lot more kids this year. Sounds like at the middle school, it, there wasn't much programming. So do you see that specifically continuing in the future? And again, the support system is probably what made this a little more robust.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's going to require further reflection and conversation. You know, I see a lot of opportunities in the summer for us to continue to expand student experiences, whether that is by individually targeting skills in math or in literacy, or providing other unique opportunities that align to our work and maybe our own design thinking and ways to engage students in other areas. Same maybe targeted population of students, but students that would really benefit from, you know, using their, you know, their brains over the course of the summer and not necessarily just taking too much of a break from learning and being able to engage them in other unique ways. I think we could have a lot of success doing, doing some really innovative work in that area at the middle level going forward as well.
Barb, I want to thank you. Your team has done wonderful work. In many districts we see there is a breakdown between buildings and community yard. And the presentation tonight shows how well our whole team works together. And that's not usual across districts that I work with in our capacities. But there's usually this breakdown of community does this and buildings do that. And you've got to have this partnership as ongoing piece. So thank you for working so well with the team to have this happen.
They're a very easy team to handle. Yes, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the entire team who came tonight? Thank you. So impressive that you're all here. Really thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a report from our student representative. And I was, I was going to introduce Tolu to you, but she, she went ahead and did it. So that was great. I've had an opportunity, I've known Tolu for a little while through all of her leadership activities at the high school. But I also had some opportunity to speak with Tolu about what she wanted from this position. And, and you can see right away, she's, she's ready to contribute as the voice of the student body. So with that, I will let you do your student update.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm super excited to start this. This year, I think it's been really fun. To begin, throughout the district, I'll start with, it is homecoming next week. Homecoming will be September 27th to October 1st. The parade will be held on October 1st, so the Friday. It starts at 4:30 in the Green Lot, and then it will end at St. Andrews, and all are welcome and encouraged to come. The football game starts at 7:00 PM, and it's Mountain Meadows versus Spring Lake Park. Tickets are on sale now at goesuppers.com and it will make, at.org. And it makes entering the game a little bit easier for the people there. Also, MIA is coming up October 21st to the 22nd. Moving on to Wildwood Elementary School, the PTL run is October 8th. Picture Retake Day is October 19th. First graders have begun working with interactive science notebooks in their classrooms. Second graders in Ms. Anderson's class are working on writing a biography on the principal at Wildwood. And O H, PTL run is October 15th and Picture Retake is October 14th. Nature Trail Day is October 20th, and students get the opportunity to learn about nature and how that connects to their world. Students are also personalizing announcements with jobs as writers, producers, and anchors. I did not go to school here when I was in fifth grade, but I do remember getting that opportunity and knowing that it was something that gave you a little bit of security and something that you definitely looked forward to. The garden club has started with both students and teachers participating, and their goal is to kind of beautify the front of the school. Fifth graders are looking to achieve their bronze award in Girl Scouts, and they're doing so by encouraging all to be conscious of the energy they're using. And Mountain Meadows Middle School, September 28th is Picture Retakes. Map testing was this week scheduled for sixth to eighth graders. And the Mountain Meadows Middle Room have the opportunity to have some outdoor concerts this summer. And finally, Mountain Meadows High School, the Peace Act for Juniors and Barrels is October 13th. Picture Retake Day is the 19th. Our Homecoming Dance is October 2nd. It will be outside this year due to COVID. And it's going to be from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Tickets are also available now, $15, $30 at the door, so get them soon. Seniors, they should be paying attention to your book because our baby pictures and our quotes are due very soon. And then athlete visits, we are going to have Fall Sports visit the elementary schools next week, whether it be football, soccer, tennis, all the sports, go to those kids and, you know, play in the playground, get some autographs, that kind of fun stuff. And finally, with the data from last year's graduating class, Mountain Meadows' graduation rate is 98.6%. So that's my report.
Wow, that's a lot of information.
I love the athletes going to, it's, it's so fun. It's with the elementary kiddos. Yeah, it's, it's fun.
So one thing I wanted to share with you that I heard from a few parents this last week, that the high school football players have been for years, they've been student coaches with the youth football teams, and just how great that is for both the high school students and the students both. In fact, I witnessed one of our high school players who, his great leadership coaching these young athletes. And then also his parents came to watch him in that coaching role at the game last week. And it was just really great. His parents were so proud to see him coaching. The kids loved him. They wait for him at the, at the varsity games, high five him. It's just a great partnership. So it's just really. So, it's just really fun to see.
Yes. And one of my jobs is to confirm everyone's orders and like say they actually did it. And I did see a few people being like, "Oh, I was coaching for the kids." And I was like, "Yeah, that seems like a really cool opportunity for you to have." So.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Your turn.
Yeah, so for my update, can I, can I, are you going to flip for it for me or am I? And Tolu took a few things.
That's often happens, but that's okay. Okay. So, I have a few things. I, for the, for my update today, I, I wanted to be able to give you a picture of some things that are happening. You know, we've started school. And so, just some, some pictures of what's happening around the district. Also share, I, I have in here just kind of the assessments in progress, but, but to just kind of piggyback on what you heard from our team earlier, just what we're doing this fall.
Also, some things about what we're doing with the connections and relationships. As you know, that was, that's a big focus for us going into this fall in particular. And we have a number of students who are, oh, sorry.
I have to stay here. Okay. 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 Connections and relationships, as we know, we had some students who have been in distance learning, and we wanted to make sure that we, you heard this again, sorry, that we brought those students in and really connected everyone and built those strong relationships to, to start off our year. Then, of course, I know everyone's interested again in what's going on in COVID-19 and the dashboard. We have some updates to share with you on that, including the FAQ that we've added to the school year plan website. So, first of all, here are some pictures of what's happening around the district. And I think a lot of these, in fact, are from today. Am I right about that? Alice went out with her camera, came back with some cute pictures of some sort of kindergarten nurse reading there very seriously. At any rate, but I know that it's nice to see, see what's happening. And I know, I know I've heard from parents who are eager to come in to the buildings. And I know that's a frustrating aspect of COVID. So, we wanted to make sure that you could see all the, the work that's going on there, including the collaboration and learning. I think that's the pig, right? Is that, that you kept? That you? Are you in there? Oh, you're in there. And so, I think she were trying to keep the actual pig out of the picture so that, wow, so.
I love this one. Worked a flexible feeding. Innovation, wow, that's an infection. Great.
You might, you might see, actually, they have one of those in the back too, one of those banners. So, each year, our graduating class is a class project at their overnight party. They are, they seem their overnight party. And so, this year, the class of 2021 made banners for each of our schools with that "Make Every Year Count" message, and then they signed it. And so, these are hanging at all of our school buildings and feature the class of 2021. And so, we also just included here a few facts about 2021 by the numbers, some things that have happened, that happened last year. Now, those aren't all the graduating class, but you've heard about some of these, I think. The two state debate qualifiers, the MHS teams that competed at State for History Day, and two students that went to Nationals. That's the first time that's happened. And not everyone came to see out the display of the projects here last year, unfortunately, because typically, you get to come into the building and see all of those and place the students. And so, we know that that, now that everyone got to see that. We had six White Bear Center for the Arts Award recipients and Best of Show awardees. And we did, the White Bear Center for the Arts intended to come this evening to share with you those, those students, to talk about their programs and share the student awards with you this evening. But you have a packet here, and instead, they weren't able to come. As you know, when we talked about this, our all-state band orchestra members from Mottameta, we had a new record of eight, eight all-state band. And I won't read all of these, but I do, I know we haven't talked about the record-setting number of runs, 20, scored by the Mottameta baseball team to secure the class AAA state championship. So, I thought I'd, I'd put that out as well. But we have these right here. It's just kind of a fun by the numbers of 2021. Again, I want to just talk about what's been happening around the district. You've heard about our assessment days this fall, and I want you to know, and actually you've heard about it from Tolu too, that we do have assessments in progress right now. The K-5 had those assessment days, but our middle school is in the midst of doing some assessments as well, so that we can get those, that diagnostic testing for our students to set us off on that, on that path to support students moving forward. We also have a new gifted and talented coordinator this year, and she's been out, she's been out in the buildings surveying teachers and students to, to learn more about what our next steps need to be. Again, you heard some about this as well, our connections and relationships. That staggered open house and assessment days at the elementaries really made a big difference. I heard that when I went to the PTO as well, that students had an opportunity to see their teachers twice, because with that staggered start, we, we did it, it was a health and safety decision, but it had these unintended benefits of what we noticed, that this is something that we need to continue, because our students and families were able to talk to teachers. Whereas typically, it's just so many people and so rushed. So, so those are, those were some ways that right off the bat, our elementaries were able to build those connections and relationships. There's also the responsive classroom that, that we, we always use, a responsive classroom model in our elementaries that are allowing to build that, that classroom community. The Mottameta Middle School, one thing that is, is important to note are those minute meetings. Our counselors are meeting with each student on their team to welcome and get to know each other, which is, they're really targeting our getting to know students and connecting with students. We also have a lot of team building and onboarding activities going on through ZEPR time. At the high school, this year, we are using advisories, so we have a flex time, we have flex time back. That was something that you've heard students talk about, really wanting to have that flex time back in the schedule. We do. And at the beginning of the year, we're really starting with in advisories before they start using that flex time, so that there's one teacher really connecting with the students, that smog with the students. And then, they will be, they will be transitioning to flex time soon. Okay, so, this is just an update and to, to just show you, this is, oh, sorry.
When, when will the flex time be?
I think, I want to say it starts next week. Tolu, do you know when the flex time starts? Pretty soon.
During the day.
Oh, what time is it between the day? So, when it starts, from what I've heard, is that because of COVID right now, they're trying to really be careful with contact tracing. So, we're all still in advisories.
Like 9:15 or like 10:15? So, after the second hour, four minutes.
I was just curious what it was going to look like time-wise in the day. And I don't, and Tolu could be wrong, but I think it's coming pretty soon, that you're going to switch to, to flex time. I, I do know that they want to know where everyone is and what's the process going to be for that. So, this is last week's, or this is what's currently on our website. It gets updated tomorrow with our, our COVID district dashboard. We do, we've been reporting our positive cases, our Washington County transmission rate level, and also our vaccination rates of students by grade band. I'll just say, I've said this before, but these numbers that we have here are, are best estimate. They're not exact because we pull these from a database. And so, there are records that might not be in there, it might not be. So, this is pretty, but this is pretty close. And it's similar to how Washington County also can track. So, this will be updated tomorrow. And tomorrow, when we update, we are going to start listing cases by building at that point. So, currently, and this will be on the dashboard tomorrow, we are still high. We're still, our transmission rate in Washington County is still high. We've gone up since last we were together, but our percent positivity has stayed the same. And we do continue to monitor this, and we watch for our local data for transmission rates over time, transmission levels, sorry, transmission levels and trends over time. So, again, starting on September 24th, the district COVID-19 dashboard will show weekly cases by building. You may have seen, if you're a parent in the district, you may have been receiving the notification of positive cases in the child's classroom. So, this is different than last year. Last year, we did the contact tracing, because we are quarantining students that were within six feet of a positive case. We're not, everyone's wearing masks, so we're not doing that this year. And so, instead, we are notifying families so that they're aware that there was a positive case in their child's classroom, so that families can monitor for symptoms. But we're not quarantining. And so, to give you an example of what that looks like this year, I did look today, and I tried to compare the, what did, I'm sorry, did we have 14? So, the 14 cases, I went back and I looked for a, a week last year when we had 14 cases. I found one of 15 cases. I didn't find the 14. And in that case, we had 136 students out, students and staff out in quarantine. And right now, we have, when I counted, it looked like we had about 33 that were quarantined. So, that's the difference now. So, we're not quarantining as many, but you might be receiving more notifications. And that's the trade-off, okay? So, know that. I know. And I, yeah, I, I understand. I understand that. I had, you know, I had that same experience. So, so, it, so, and students and staff who test positive will be quarantined according to that decision tree. So, one thing I'd want, I had a question about, a couple of different parents asked me about being able to share those who are vaccinated versus those who are unvaccinated, and what the rates are there. When someone tests positive and notifies us that they've tested positive, we learn that they've tested positive. We don't ask a question about their vaccination status, because that's irrelevant to us when it comes to the quarantine, because the quarantine is the same regardless. So, we don't keep that data. And it's our practice to, to ask questions that we need to know, not just those questions that we're curious about. So, we don't have, we don't actually have that data about that. So, I just would want you to know that.
And is that part of data? Like, would be wrong?
Well, the way, it's the way, so, so for data practices, we ask the questions that we need to know, not what. And so, the nurses work with students. And sometimes, the students would tell, just offer that up. Families offer that up. But that's not something, because we don't need to know it, we don't ask it. There would come, I mean, there might come a point where that's the kind of question we have. But at this point, because we, we quarantine in the same way, we don't ask that question. So, that's, that's why we don't know that. So, just so that everyone knows where to find information, again, this is our website. There's the school year plan there. The, the health and safety protocol is under quick links as well. And so, you can find that there. We did, so if you recall, when we did the administrative recommendation on July 29th, we included a link for family, staff, and students to share questions, additional considerations, things they thought maybe we hadn't thought of. Then, we revised our recommendation on August 18th. We did that again. We sent out another feedback form. And so, we use that information to both understand our school community's thoughts about the protocols, and then help us clarify some questions that people may have had. So, now, we have gone through those and assembled the common questions that we received on the feedback form and just other communications we've had with families. So, you know, people have called us, of course. We've gotten many emails about this. So, using those common questions, we now have an FAQ that is on the website as well. You'll recall that when we talked about this before, I had, I had set the week of October 18th as the week that we would review it officially. You asked the question, we would do it more often. I want you to know, we do this, that we're constantly reviewing, I'm continually reviewing our protocols. I set that date, if you recall, based on conversations with public health and trends that they expect to see with the Delta variant, based on knowing the trends in other countries. And so, that was our, kind of our best guess. So, and I knew that people like to know a date, so that's really why we picked it. However, it's also the case that we're continually reviewing it. So, you asked the question last time about the idea that it might change before the 18th, and that is the case, if we see, if we see a change. But we're not seeing that right now. Right now, we're still seeing high rates. Another question I want to also highlight that I've gotten a few times now, I had made, when I did my presentation, I tried to help clarify the, the difference between the CDC guidelines around schools and the CDC guidelines around indoor public spaces. And I, because they were, they were different. And I had asked the question of public health, what makes them different? Does this ring a bell to everybody here? Okay. So, I've got a lot of questions about the indoor public spaces clarification. What I, when I had asked about that, a public health person that I talked to at the state, oh, moved away from my, sorry about that. My, sorry about that. The public health that I talked to at the state level had suggested vaccination rates do make a difference, and had given me 75% to consider our high school the same as an indoor public space. I will say, I've asked that question a few more times now, to say, you know, is that, is that a hard and fast? That was what she gave me. When I talked to Washington County recently, he seemed to, he did say that vaccination rates do matter, and he was seeing an increase in vaccination rates throughout Washington County, and he felt, it felt like it was very promising. He said if the transmission rates go down, which again, either way, that's what we're waiting for, is for transmission rates to go down, he still thought it would be, he didn't think the 75 was a hard fast rule. And he did think vaccination rates mattered, but he didn't call that a hard and fast rule. He said it would be reasonable to think about, about potentially, you know, having masks recommended once our transmission rate went down, based on what we're looking at at vaccination rates. So, I'd want you to know that that was something I got, some more clarification I got. So, I think those are all the things I wanted to make sure I hit to re-clarify after last time we had this conversation.
Can you go back to the slide before?
This one?
I'm sorry, before that. One with the numbers.
The dashboard. This is what's up there this week. It'll be updated.
And then, so, when we say transmission rates, we're really just seeing positive cases. So, that's not transmission.
So, this is Washington County, this is the Washington County level. So, it's transmission rate within Washington County.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, sorry. And then, we also, we also report our positive cases within our buildings.
So, on our dashboard, we don't, we don't also put up there the transmission rates within Washington County?
Well, so, transmission rate is based on two things. When we talk about, we do have this on our dashboard, Washington County.
We have it on our dashboard. Okay. This is what we see on our website.
Yes, yes. And this will be updated. And transmission rate is based on percent positivity of tests and case rates. So, both of those things go into account when coming up with the transmit, the labeled transmission rate in Washington County. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
A follow-up to that. We, you, we are not medical experts. We are not.
Trained in this area. And so, we have this really great relationship with Washington County Public Health.
Yes.
And that is very important to make sure we're making decisions based on the right data at the right times. How often do you have meetings with public health? How often are you collaborating and discussing these things with them?
At least once a week.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
I would like to just, if I, going back to like all the, the student numbers, I, there was one number we didn't hit, the 1,432 hours of volunteering of the Mottameta High School students. And there's this thing I've heard from the beginning of all these presentations tonight, is how much learning and leadership our students are doing outside of the classroom. I know that's been something that we've been working on as a board, and I just want I know that's been something that we've been working on as a board, and I just wanted to highlight that, since we didn't highlight it specifically, but to bring up a lot of good examples. And it looks like the sports teams are going to get some of that leadership and learning this weekend on some of the playgrounds. So I'm really excited to see that.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
There is, we have so many things going on in our district. So thank you for taking all the time to share that with us. Next on our agenda, we have discussion and information items, starting with the board member calendar. So the calendar is in the board packet. Are there things on that calendar that people want to call out, create a submission? Karen, why don't you start us off?
For 9:16, there is a board retreat on the 29th of this month, of September, and it will be from 4 until 8 scheduled. So I, of course, will be attending that board retreat.
Great, thank you. Tony?
The AMSD annual conference is November 17th. You should, they don't have the timing. The location's going to be the Minneapolis Marriott Northwest, so you should probably clear a calendar. It's going to be, I mean, Minnesota 2.0, so it looks like it should hopefully be a really good program. Details are to come. And once again, I just want to reiterate those front-end dates for the PTO, or October 8th at Wildwood and October 15th at O.L.C. Anderson. Maybe, might be possible we have some board member visits during those times, because it's a really fun event, if you haven't seen it.
Homecoming, but too, thank you for taking care of that. You know more details than I do. And also, I'll call out the world's best workforce, the work Jenna is coordinating will be a great piece on October 28th for the community in terms of learning more about maybe parts of our district, the assessment accountability pieces in there to talk about how well our students are doing.
And Lucy, that's before the board meeting?
Yes, that's always before the board meeting. So is it 6 o'clock? I don't remember, I have a funny. I think it's 6 to 7 usually, yeah, like, uh, before the meeting. Open to the public, great opportunity, great conversation, looking at, anything? 6, thank you, Stacy. Yeah.
And the board meeting on November 11th date is going to change, is that correct?
Yes, correct, that's correct.
So you all received an email from Leslie working to find us the new date. So if you haven't looked at that email, if you could respond soon, that would help us get that rescheduled so we can notify the community. Any other things? The other discussion item, information we have is the superintendent evaluation funding. So on September 8th, oh, sorry, September 9th, 2021, the school board went into closed session to discuss the evaluation of the superintendent, Ms. Duffin. The evaluation process consisted of three parts, a reflection from the superintendent on progress towards goals set by the board and superintendent for the year, a review of the board, survey on superintendent leadership and attainment of annual goals, and then the board discussion and closed session about those two documents and our interactions by the past year. The board unanimously supports the great work of Ms. Duffin, her leadership during pandemic has been strong. The past year has been difficult for everyone as we navigated uncertainty and change. Ms. Duffin worked tirelessly to meet the needs of students, teachers, staff, and administration during this time. We appreciate the long hours and support of students, staff, teachers, administrators, and board members. Thank you so much for your work this past year.
Thank you.
Now to our action items tonight. First, we have the approval of donations and grants totaling $1,620.
Thank you, Tony. Second.
Thank you, Tony. We have a motion in a second for the donations and grants. I would take a moment to thank the donors, and their contributions are greatly appreciated. We use these funds to further the mission of the school district and towards the wishes of the donors. The thing I was, that we can't put on here because we don't have the accurate count probably is volunteer hours in our community, which is another really big piece for our schools. We have people who donate hours and hours of time, which is also another way to give back to our schools. So we have a motion in a second, another discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the MSBA legislative priority proposals. I have, I have. Did I give you one? No, I don't think I did. That's different. Also, there's one for you and there's one for the community as well. You need to have everything for the board packet out there. So those come in. So as a board, we've been talking about legislative proposals for the MSBA delegate assembly. So remember, these are ideas that as a board we can put forward to the delegate assembly to be voted on. This is not legislation. These are ideas for our professional association to lobby on behalf of school boards if adapted by the body. So we have two ideas that we've been talking about to bring forward. We have the first one, we can talk about it, we can pass these as a group, or reject these, or we can do one by one. So the first one, this is one that we've been talking about, building on the work from last year in instructional hour, building on our strategic plan quite a bit, is that we would like MSBA to urge the legislature to pass legislation that allows for districts to have flexibility in how, where, when, and at what pace students learn with approval from their local school board, while still meeting the Minnesota academic standards and accountability requirements. So this is work mainly focused in, I've had the word high school in and out, but really there's a large push in our state to redesign high schools particularly, but I see great opportunities in our other buildings as well. But it might be that as this moves forward in that process, it becomes more focused at the high school level, depending on what happens at the Capitol. So that's the first one. If people have questions or want to have additional conversations, with smoking ideas, go ahead, Stacy.
So this is really helpful for something like the Capstone Project, right? Could you explain that a little?
So there are other things that we want to do in our buildings with that strategic plan, and the reason, I'll go to Capstone, I'll go somewhere else first. You might want to have Capstone a little bit. So this word and word came about because of another document on our agenda about that secondary schedule. So so think about what we want to happen with the secondary schedule from feedback from our community and building the materials teachers and students about learning flexibility. This will help with that, if it's passed. Also, it is much differently than we worked with last year, because last year, we were very specific. We want this piece of statute changed to this. And based on your experience here at the Capitol, what you ask for and what happens in that process changes quite a bit, right? As you, that you have voices on the table. And so last year, we had a really good conversation with M.D.A. and Edmund in instructional hour. We had two conversations with them. And three of that is what I think we need to become more specific. So I tried to pull this back a little bit. So it could incorporate our schedule change, which ties, you know, to this quite a bit, could incorporate Capstone ideas, could incorporate different pathways to, for high school students, it could incorporate looking at the school day differently, bringing target services in a different sort of way, take care of, you know, there's so many possibilities once we're open and we're like this for boards, but we want flexibility, which I think is the key part. So do you want to think Capstones?
For example, with the Capstone project, the Capstone is intended for students to be able to have more experience outside of school, in the workplace. In the workplace or in a civic situation or community service, but the students get to drive that. It requires different hours, it would require a different time of day to participate in something like this, and we are really bound by our school day and, and schedule when it comes to funding. And so to be able to open up and say, this is an experience that should count as those hours of instruction, is kind of what we want to be able to do, to have that flexibility so that students can, and I think of it specifically when we get to that senior year, when students are more independent and are going to be looking for different experiences that bridge to the post-secondary experiences that they're chasing. So, so that would be an example, but.
And even Capstone without this, but doing it with more flexibility allows us to do it in a more meaningful way, I think, for students. Is that a good?
Instead of having the Capstone hour in their day, it can work in a different way.
Right. And it really builds on the potential for business partnerships and other pieces as well. So.
Can I clarify a little bit? Because I think if, I understand a little bit, having gone through this advocating for it last year at the legislature, how we're currently restricted in terms of like how educational time is defined by the state and how that really restricts some of this innovative thinking that our strategic plan calls us to do. So can you just kind of bring us back to like what we're asking to have changed and what that current restriction is?
So, this is very similar with last year, because last year, we went in with this really sad idea of we're going to do away with instructional hours, that number in that really specific statute, right? But then as we started having conversations with people, we do want to do away with it, we're going to redefine it, right? And so this opens up in a certain way that allows us for conversation. Right now, I don't know if we've captured how it's currently defined, is what I'm trying to ask.
A school day is defined, you know, it starts and ends, the same start and end time and the same hours during the day.
So measured by kids in seats in the classroom down to the minute? Is that?
Yes.
That's what I was trying to get to.
And there are a lot of different, there are a lot of different parts of how we are funded or how, there are different legislation, legislative items that are always tied back to that schedule. And it, it just keeps popping up in different.
Creates this very rigid structure that allows, that learning has to take place in that structure, and learning that takes place outside that structure doesn't count as school, is kind of the reason for this, is my understanding.
Yes. And so to Lucy's point, you can really picture it when we get to high school. It's harder to really picture in the K8, and there are, because it, K8 just developmentally requires more structure, but it really opens up a lot at the high school level, so.
So, I'll come back to you too, I'm sorry. So I really look forward to hearing more about this and the fact that, I think that we've learned a lot during the pandemic and that kids can learn anywhere, anytime, and we knew that before, but now we saw it. And we also saw that how teachers can differentiate based on student needs, and I think that, you know, the Capitol Project's levy for technology would definitely allow us the flexibility to be able to do this more easily. When I look at, this just seems like this aligns with what Tony said, our strategic plan, and it seemed as though this conversation needed to happen in school districts a long time ago, and now that maybe it took a pandemic for this to happen, and I just really appreciate the fact that we could truly differentiate based on student need and what works best for kids.
Remember, this is proposed piece to the delegate assembly, then we were, again, lots of other work.
It started though. Yes, the conversation started, and we made really good progress last year, so it just takes that and explains it. And it comes from conversations on the table, right? The conversations being, hearing about scheduling. Stacy, she had some great articles with me about personalized learning and things we've been talking about as well. They really feed into what we're trying to achieve for our students, but then we keep running into barriers. And so it's not, we heard about some barriers we overcame, busing and other pieces. And as we think about innovation, I think there's going to be barriers, but we have a team in place to help us really do this well. The other piece I find interesting about this is charter schools have a lot more flexibility than we do, and that's all we're asking for, is we have the same capability our charter schools have in order to do really good work on behalf of students.
But last year, your previous.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sure, it was next.
I just want to have a clarifying question I got. So the Capstone project, it came in place to allow students to have more, like, less rigid classrooms, correct? If I'm explaining that right?
That's an example. So the Capstone is something that's been talked about quite a bit here in our district, and it's had fits and starts in part because of the schedule. But that is the idea behind the Capstone, is that students would have experiences outside of school to really study something in depth. So when you start thinking about your career pathway or the pathway to post-secondary that you're taking, it would be some opportunities to have that bridge that goes from your classroom setting into where it is, your future program of study.
Yeah, with the psychology, if your class be an example of that, it's the class of students are going to other elementary schools and, you know, giving out the kids for their 45 minutes of classroom, or would that not be within the district?
No, it's, it's, conceptually, it's similar. I think, I think we envision this as a little bit more along the lines of what it is you really intend to study in the future. And so, and to do that, in a lot of cases, it will be going outside the school district.
Can I give you an example that might? The example, like, you could partner up with a professional in microbiology, as they're doing a RAPS work, that you've been experiencing as a scientist and working with that scientist to create this project that you're putting together is, that's your Capstone. So that mentorship ability to work with a professional in the field and getting worldwide work experience that you're running from, tying it all together. So that might be an example.
And thank you, so, and of course, Harry.
It started out in our engineering program as a one-year course, and then it changed to a half-year course. And then it was paired with bio mimicry. And then it was the last month of B.C. Calc. And the last two years, it hasn't existed because of the pandemic. And so we want to, we hope that we can bring that experience back for all students. So everyone could have a chance for, for a Capstone-like experience. When we were mainly focused on engineering, that's how we had the engineering Capstone. And then it's developed into this, I think everyone should have that experience. So, yeah.
So my other comment was that last year, the biggest barrier was your wording on seat time. The delegates could back it over the wording on seat time. They thought, yes.
So that was the barrier. That was your barrier at the delegate assembly.
And so if you're looking at bottom of the page, there's two other sections that have to be written up here before the system is on Monday, that had to do with the background research and the rationale by the district. And I've drafted these things, but have not finished with them. And so the background research, we've got good pieces from many different organizations about redesigning of high schools and things like that, but under the rationale, then we've got our schedule change, we've got a lot of other pieces that I think help clarify that. So again, it's that, you know, constant learning is also the word number two, and loosening the language and making sure the language in that rationale clearly states, it's not a mandate, no one has to change anything, but it provides the flexibility. And so adding that language because of the delegate assembly last year, will happen in that bottom part. So thank you for that. Karen, you next, I think Stacy has something else too. Oh, okay. Sorry, Kevin, go ahead.
Well, I think when we do this delegate assembly, which some of us have done for a very long time, that, that idea of flexibility and local control seems to really resonate with the folks there. Recently, we've seen local control that we didn't necessarily want, and this is one that I think we, as school members, definitely do want. And I think that always seems to get the crowd kind of, but one of the things I recognize from last year's efforts on this was to try to get some other school districts to sign on board before we actually reach the delegate assembly. To me, that holds a lot of strength. And so if we have a Minneapolis schools or a Livingston schools or a Duluth or whatever, if we have more people signing on, that really carries the weight, because that means that they're not just looking at a suburban-centric thing, we're looking at something that would go to greater Minnesota and beyond, so.
We're going to play for that, but I wasn't comfortable pushing this out without board approval. And so I've been able to secure, you know, this is new number, if I'm going to have time to add those other people as we go forward. So we have a plan through the Interval Superintendent's Group that ours is a part of. That group is going to see it, and those superintendents will be given the chance to take each other's boards and add it on. And then MSBA has a futures-thinking school board group, and they will also look at it, and those 15 board members will have the opportunity to look at it and potentially take it to their districts. And then if other people have connections to board members that I'll share it with, and we get additional endorses, that's great, and would be very helpful. I agree. And it would be very helpful. I agree.
Are you going to take these together or individually?
It might be easier to do it individually because they're very different.
We have approval. We have resolution number one.
Kevin, you have a motion?
A second. Second from Tony. So moved by Kevin, second by Tony. Any other discussion on these, the first one? If this passes, I'm looking to have you for help, but testifying and writing things. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. That was the first one. The second one, Julie's been meeting this one. Julie, may I present this one?
The second one is all about charter athletic academies. And our resolution is be resolved that the MSBA urges the legislature to eliminate the practice of Minnesota State High School League member schools providing sports-specific training during the student, during the daily student contact hours. And this stems from the fact that it appears that the level playing field for sports is being tipped in the, in the direction of sports academies. And it's the long-term effects that this could have on school districts in pulling students away from our districts or, or encouraging our district to actually try to offer some type of a sports academy. It could be, it could be gymnastics. It could be baseball. It could be, it could be lacrosse. And these sports-specific academies that are focused on the sports first are, are having practice time during the school day and participating in high school league sports.
Thank you, Kelly. Do those schools have another venue to compete?
So I, so it's all very complicated to me. And what I understand is there is another league. Kelly probably knows more about it from personal experience. There was a prep national and international league. And last year, when, when one local academy got its charter status, they started a high school league team. And this could have effects all the way up through the high school league in that, you know, eventually it could just be only academies playing in all the state tournaments. I mean, it's, it could go that far. And it's, it's, it seems like a slippery slope.
Kelly, you have something?
I actually didn't raise my hand. I'm sorry. It just seems as though. Bringing apples to apples. I mean, I guess you probably thought I would have a common question with my sports background. It doesn't seem like if Tony and I were, I'm attending Montomeda High School and you're attending X school. And during the day, we're fairly equal athletes and teams. And Tony's adding three hours of practice time during my day. And mine has to be outside of my academic day, but his is part of his academic day. I don't see how we can compete at the same place at the same time for the same goal that we're trying to achieve. So, yeah, I think it's something that I also have seen this one coming, that this has seemed like, this has been in the works for a while. And, yeah, I don't have a question. I just, I feel like we're not comparing apples to apples with what we have existing right now.
So currently the high school league has really focused in the last couple of years on this let them play philosophy, on the philosophy of building.
Better, better relationships, developing the character of athletes and, and trying to take the focus away from a sole focus on winning. And, you know, the purpose of activities being kids finding meaning and relationships in schools. And this, this seems to contradict what, what has been promoted through the high school league. I mean, many of us that have been on the board did the let them play, like some minor, small, little let them plays. And Lucy and I did a more in-depth thing with let them play, which is, it's phenomenal. It's a phenomenal plan put up by the high school league. So.
Yeah. Based on a book called Inside Out Coaching. And I have my edition still if anyone wants to read Inside Out Coaching. I have that available to you. Anything else for Kevin? Go ahead, Kevin.
So if it's my understanding, some of these prep sport schools were in some leagues that are independent of state, that are more of a national. Am I getting that right? And so because of COVID, they were unable to participate in those. And then they came back to participate in high school, high school exemption sports. But they had, I was extra practice because they were intending to play this sort of thing. And it just so happens I couldn't, so now they're back to here. When I look at this, I wonder, is this more of a league thing? But do we, do they really take this to the high school league and ask the question of how do we deal with this? Versus having legislative action taken? I guess I'm, I kind of thought that's what the league was there to do was to ensure that there was a level playing field. I mean, that was, I think, how I got the premise of what they do. And I mean, I agree in concept of it totally. I absolutely totally support. But I just wonder if this is a legislative piece or if this is a high school league piece.
So I would agree. And I worked with our activities director on this. And, and there has been an effort to try and it was unsuccessful.
So it came before the.
I don't know. Or the high school league, but it's been discussed and it was not. It was not.
I just, I just wonder, Lucy, we have, I look at you because you're closest to MSBA. I mean, I just wonder, we have two reps on the MSBA board that are also on the high school. They sit at that board table for the high school league. And I just wonder if that would be an appropriate question. I think Mike Dolan maybe is.
No, they changed it. Suzie and someone else. They just changed.
Oh, no. Michelle Yenner is our district.
Because Kevin, well, Michelle mentioned a different thing earlier. So I have a similar question when Julie and I were talking about this. And the Minnesota High School League runs a similar process with the delegate assembly piece, right? But it has to come up through the region committee. And so I was on the region committee until May and I turned this up. But Michelle Yenner from North St. Paul, I think, at Oakdale is still there. And so we could do it both ways to see how, how it plays out in terms of where it gets traction. If this is something we support, the motion for this one could be to move it forward through MSBA and the high school league. And then we could work both of those. Or if the motion is just women or venues, that's fine. I agree with the premise of it, as you've said. But then now it's a broad and decide how do you want to approach it. Not all resolutions pass through the delegate assembly.
MSBA might turn it down, but.
There has been some effort made and maybe submitting it to both. It's more about raising a win is because it seems that the conversation is being avoided. So.
Other questions for Julie?
I move approval.
To move it where?
To try for both. That's what I'm asking. Just to send it for both to high school league and MSBA? Or you just want to send it to MSBA?
Well, I guess what we're talking about is sending this to MSBA. And.
Do another vote on to the high school league? Do you think we could do them separately?
Well, I, I guess I'm fine with both. I guess on this paper, it's, you know, we really need to get this to MSBA like right away. And I don't know what the timing would be for the high school league if we, would our delegate.
It's a little bit later.
So maybe we.
Maybe we support it. We can explore that option or we could explore the option and bring it back.
Or we could bring it back first.
Yeah. So you want to just do MSBA to start with?
Okay.
Any motion from Kevin? To move it forward to MSBA. Second.
And Julie's second is a motion. Any discussion in the motion?
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next item is approval of the school board goals and after that is approval of the superintendent goals. Can we lump those together for discussion?
I'm all for it because we've discussed them together. So these superintendent goals and school board goals, we discussed at our study session. I took your feedback and updated those. I've sent, I sent them to you ahead of time so that you could review them. And so I am now asking, asking your approval of these superintendent school board goals.
So I'm going to reiterate to the public that we had a lengthy conversation at the last board meeting. But when we get to this regular board meeting time, we have discussed most of the action items at length at a study session. And this is our time then to ask questions, to ask for additional information. And then Garby gathers the information for us, makes changes based on our feedback. And then now is the time for the last minute questions and the vote. So a lot has happened with these prior to tonight. This is not the first time we're seeing these. And so they're at a point where they're ready for a vote. But are there things, let's put a motion first and we can discuss them if they're things we need to talk about. So moved.
Thank you. Move approval of both?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Kevin. So are there, is there any discussion or things that we need to look at?
More in depth.
Okay. I don't have the paper in front of me, but, but my notes are about engaging everyone on, can I look at that, Lucy? To say which one it is. Board goals about, that superintendent.
The school board will nurture collaborative partnerships between parents, local leaders and organizations while collaborating on solutions to support the health and safety and emotional growth of students and staff. Is that the one you were thinking of?
No, I'm looking at the top one. Yeah, yeah. On creating reciprocal learning relationships with our district. And so I am wondering about supporting regular student staff and family input opportunities with a focus on health and safety. And we had, I, I had asked a couple of questions about, about protocols or we decide that that is for, that is for input because we always have to have a health and safety feedback piece.
Right. And so that is what we have. We've done it twice now with the, this, the comments on the protocols. And so actually, when we make a change again, we'll do the same thing. And, and the point of that is to get those, those considerations that we need to have out there. So as an example, something that came out when we talked about masking was the idea that in early literacy, families really wanted to know that there would be some way that we were accommodating instruction when the lips needed to be seen in early literacy or speech are two examples that we talked about. And so that was one of the ways we, we got input on, on the health and safety so that we could both clarify and we put it into the resolution as well to make that clear that that would be an exception. So, so that's an example.
Other questions or comments, discussions? All right. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motions are approved, both the superintendent and school board goals. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Jeff, you're just pacing.
Jeff is so excited. Yeah. It's so hard. We made you wait so long. Sorry, Jeff.
Five o'clock, nine o'clock.
So next one, the approval of preliminary 2021 pay 2022 levy certification. It's all yours, Jeff.
I found all the principals are here for this.
I went home to watch it. They're watching you live.
All right. I'll start. Yeah. So, so this is the, the plan, the levy certification process where you're going to approve the preliminary levy? And then, I mean, it's not even, come on. There you go. No, that's the wrong one. Okay. Anyway, I'll keep going. Okay. I can, do you guys, do you guys have it?
I have it.
Right? Okay. I think I can.
You do have an iPad to look at?
Why don't I start? I'll just keep going. So what boards are required to do by, by September 30 is, is approve the preliminary levy? I think I'm good. I think I'm good. And in our, in our learning session meeting earlier this month, we spent a great deal of time kind of looking at the different components, different dollar amounts by fund. So as you know, levies are, school district levies are either voter approved. And those are things like a capital projects levy, operating referendum, bonded debt. And, and then the other, the other pieces of levies would be discretionary levies. And those are things that are approved in the legislature, like a dollar amount per student for operating capital, LTFM funding. And then there's a breakdown between how much is levy and how much is state aid. So when we get to the, the next slide, I think is the, is the total levy. We're just showing you a breakdown of the different levy, levy amounts by fund. Far and away, the general fund is about over 60% of the total levy. Because then the general fund is the operating referendum, LTFM, local option. Also some big funding components within the general fund. There you go. Yeah. Can I make it go? Which way? Okay. Think I was, there. Right. Okay. So there's the different levy components for pay 22. And I did say that when, when you're approving this levy, the pay 22 levy, it's going to form, it's going to be the tax side of revenue for the 22, 23 school year. So first, as we start to look at 22, 23, this is the tax revenue. So we're showing the different dollar amounts in the three governmental funds that we levy in. And general fund 65%, debt service 33. The total increase from the pay 21 is 1.37% over the prior year. Then I guess we'd say significant changes for pay 22 that are reflected in the, in these total dollar amounts. The, there are three tiers to our operating levy. The pay 22 preliminary levy certification includes that first tier increase. So this was voted on back in 2018. So this is the, is pay 22 picks up the initial increase that was approved back at, at that time. So the operating referendum increases by $275 per student. This levy also includes, or excludes the expiring capital projects levy. So that number that I think you saw from Patrick, 742,000 for the capital projects levy, that's not included in these numbers because it's expiring. I want to keep hitting the wrong button. So board action, board approval on tonight. You're just a basically, you're approving all of the levies that were authorized. So includes all discretionary and photo approved levies. The final approval then will be, so we're not doing a specific dollar amount tonight. That'll happen in December. That'll be subsequent to our truth and tax hearing, which we have scheduled for, for December 9. So you're, tonight, just the initial, the preliminary is approving that the amount the district is authorized. Questions? I think that's it. I think that's it.
Again, this is a topic we talked about at length. Asked many questions at our last study session. Our fairness committees talked about it a number of times. So any other last questions before?
I move approval.
Move approval by Julie. Second by Tony. Last call for discussion. All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any suggestions?
Thanks.
Last action item, approval of the guiding change document for secondary redesign. This is yours, bud.
Yes, and so I'm bringing to you the guiding change document that we've discussed a number of times now. And I'm going to give you some, I'm going to back up and give some background as well before I ask for this approval. But the guiding change document, I first brought to you, when was it? March of 2020. March of 2020. And then we put it on hold for obvious reasons. And then I brought it back, then we brought it back and talked about it at length at the most recent study session.
And in July.
And in July, so July is what I want to talk about here, to go back to that and talk about the process and where this fits. So, this is where I look to my friend on the right. Okay, so could we go to the thing that says page five? My attachment that's in that folder that says page five? Thanks. So this process that we are embarking on, and I'll give you the timeline, is the other slide that Patrick held up. So if you recall, during our retreat, we learned about this decision-making process that I keep calling the ZEE. You see now what I call the ZEE. So this is the process we talked about, and we decided, or I don't know, we talked about, and then our leadership team decided to follow this decision-making process for our secondary schedule redesign. And the way this is going to work is we did, we are going to be working with TeamWorks, and our facilitator from TeamWorks is Christine Roblesky, who you've met before. She ran our retreat. And what we'll do, and I'll show you how this works, but if you recall, what this, where we start here is in this design team phase. And actually, before we got to the design team phase, we looked at that guiding change document. And so I'm asking you to approve the guiding change document today. So we will then hand out to the design team. The design team, I'll show you the steps they'll take. They'll work on it. They'll bring it back, they'll take it out to our parent, students, and staff to get input and feedback on it, which will then go back to the design team, which will then go back again one more time to get some stakeholder voice before it goes back to the design team for final, for a final draft before they bring it to the school board. You notice my name there between the design team and the school board. And the reason for that is that I will be able to let you know as we go, give you kind of an overview of what's happening as we go through those steps. But I'm more of the, kind of the person who's going to share with you what's happening, but I am not actually on the design team. The design team truly is this group of administrators, teachers, and staff. So will you flip to the timeline, Portman?
Yes.
And so to give you more detail about that, so Jen Reichel and I have been working on this together with our facilitator. And we have started with the initial project planning. And so you see this, the finalizing guiding change document, that's what we're asking for you to do tonight. The principals and Jen have been working on establishing the design team already. So that's already in process. Part B, these design team sessions, so we're in October, there will be an overview of the process, review the guiding change, review decision-making framework. All of that's going to happen at a meeting in October that is coming up. And so I don't know if you want me to go through all of this, but this is the process that we talked about in the retreat, and this has a little bit more detail as well, which includes some shared learning together. It includes really going into the historical and current information regarding secondary program design and secondary schedules. How did we get here? What's our schedule look like? What are the things we need to think about? Trends in research? Will you scroll down for me? Thank you. So then, so then our design team takes that and does two different, is going to work on two different schedules. They're going to work on a schedule that's kind of more of a continuous improvement and more of an innovative schedule. So we'll do both of those. They'll take that, they'll design those, then it goes out to stakeholders. We'll have focus groups around these with anyone who wants to participate, parent, students, and staff. And it'll go back a couple of times before our final draft comes to you. And again, along the way, you'll be hearing about it so that it's not completely brand-new to you, but you'll see the final result there. The other parts of this is the stakeholder engagement. So in November, we are going to send out stakeholder surveys, and those will go out to families, students, and staff to find out the limitations, what are the barriers, what are the things that are working well with our schedules, and what are the barriers to, that our schedules have. This is part of the input that the design team takes to be able to understand what their task is. And again, that stakeholder engagement, that's the feedback. Those are our focus groups, and we'll have two rounds of focus groups for people who want, who are interested in participating to look at those designs to give feedback. And so that's the process that we're using. And tonight, I'm asking for the approval of your part, which I'll pull up in a second.
Who's the design team? Is that up above?
The design team is, we have staff and administrators, and Jen are part of the design team. So they're the people that work within the system, that know all the pieces. And so they'll be designing and then bringing back out for input and feedback each time.
I just want to thank you for pulling this all up because it really does, this deciding on a process really does help with the whole, how is the community going to be engaged in this? What is everyone's role in more clearly defining that for everyone that knew what to expect moving forward? So I really do appreciate you going over the process tonight.
And so to be clear then, this is the year process of design, which then, there might be some things that come out of that, that can be implemented right away. That could happen. But I'm anticipating that it'll just take a lot more time. So for example, the whole point of this is so that we have more options for students is, you know, a big driver of this work. There are a lot of limitations for students and their options. And so with that, then, once we've landed, there'll be some things that open up for teachers to bring some course proposals. The course proposals then go to the curriculum committee for vetting and review. And so there's another group that works through the course proposals. So this part, this group is really focused on the schedule that allows for better programming in our secondary schools. Yeah.
So when you send out the shareholder survey next month or in November, is there a way to provide a description without, you know, influencing views? Because I know, like when I, when we've been talking about this, I come away with, ooh, I like this idea of we're going to have more options in courses. But there's more to it, and the average person is not really going to grasp what we're, what are the options? What's out there that we can see as, okay, these are different avenues?
Right.
So is there a way to kind of summarize this without, you know, affecting how people feel about it and saying, this is why we're considering it?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. I think the way I see it, and again, so we're asking this facilitator to help us with this because she's been through this a few times, and she's actually doing this with another district as well. I think that the real part of those, the initial survey, is to find out what the barriers are to our schedule, not to dream of all the possibilities. So the first one is, what are the issues? And there'll be a student-focused group as well to get more, what's the student experience with the schedule? So what's the family experience with the schedule? What's the student's experience with the schedule? To get kind of that baseline. And then when the design team brings out a sample, an example, then we have these feedback sessions that allow families, staff, students to really dig into what is that, what are the possibilities then? Because again, there'll be a couple of different options each time.
And you'll also include what's working well, I'm guessing?
Yes, barriers and what's working. And to your point, they may not even recognize what's working.
Exactly.
Because it's easy to go back to barriers, too. So think of it though as one part of the input that the design team will have. There's all sorts of information they need to look at. They need to look at the current schedule, what are the standards, what are requirements, what are policies? And that's our cabinet is responsible for pulling a lot of that together and bringing contracts. You know, what are all the things that we need to think about that are part of the, that are tied to that schedule? So we have a lot of work to do in the meantime.
Okay. Thank you.
Isn't it a question you're asking though, Stacy? Like when you look at the document, so we've got the focus question, and then the question you're asking is many of those potential desired results, right? Of what could be possible? You were just saying, people don't know what those potential desired results might even be. And that might be putting the cart before the horse in the process because, right?
Yeah, so how about this? Because I'm not, I can't answer that terribly well at this moment. Could I come back to you with that? And we have until November. I do know that we met, so Jen and I did meet today with our facilitator, and she's starting to draft, draft a survey for us. We asked her to just go ahead and do it. And so she's working on that now. So I will bring that question back to her, if that's okay? Because I don't think I can answer it right now.
And maybe this is coming out in a different direction, but when I think about when I was in school, I feel like school looks pretty similar today, many, many years later. And so I know that we want to be more innovative as a district, but I don't know what these other innovative schools look like. And so that's kind of where I'm going is, people might just say, yeah, worked fine for me, it's fine. You know what I mean? It's like, we're more, we were reading articles, we're hearing what other districts are doing. So we kind of hear these words and we understand, ooh, there's some other things that we could be doing that would really empower our students and really have some learning growth. But I don't know that, if that's how people would just, you know, unless we give them a good description. So that's, yeah, if you could work on something toward that, I think it'd be great.
Well, and so to Kelly's point, what if we look at the guiding change document so that we can, we can, do you mind pulling that up? You're doing great. Sorry about this.
Stacy, just, I remember you were looking at it, but are you coming to like, to me, it's the why of the guiding change document. Do you need to summarize that for the community well? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, and just when they're getting surveyed, they're understanding what's the possibility here. Yeah.
Yeah, so again, this guiding change document, you've seen a few times now. And so we're asking for your approval so that we can take it and give it to the design team and say, this is what we're looking for. If you recall, the guiding change document, the content came out of the strategic planning process, both our district level strategic planning and our two buildings identified the schedule as a real limiting factor to what they wanted to do next. And so what we have in there, on the left, is our current state, our current reality. And those are a lot of the, a lot of the barriers, but also some of the opportunities as well, the things that we are really good at that could push us in a, in a direction. So that is on the left. It's not there?
Yeah, I put it there.
Okay, so we'll find it soon. And so, so that's on the left. On the right are our desired results. As a result of changing our schedule, what do we want to see? That's on the right. So a lot of that had already been populated for you based on the strategic plan. You added some things there as well after discussion. The parameters in the center, again, those are the things, those are the guidelines or the guardrails for the, for the design team to understand. Again, some came out of strategic planning, some you added to. And so when we look at this, I, so I took your feedback again at the studies, the most recent study session, and we went through it all, and you gave me some feedback, which I've added in. I sent it to you so that you got a chance to look at it ahead of time. And so I think, I think we're in a place where it's probably ready to go, and I'm asking for approval so that I can pass this off to the design team to work with. And you can see it in the board book, even if it's not upon the screen, so.
I would love to approve the guiding change document. Second.
Okay, so moved by Tony. Second by Kevin. Any other discussion?
I just want to thank you for moving forward with this. I think it's a very important thing for all of our students, for more opportunities. So thank you.
Any other discussion? All those who favor the motion to approve the guiding change document, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That was our last action item. Next, we have board committee reports. It is May 20, so I'm hoping we can be pretty succinct with these tonight. I will start with Tony.
I will do my best. There's a lot of changes happening at the state Capitol, but knowing the legislature's leadership that we should all be aware of. And the NSBA is also starting a school board represent meeting, similar to what they've been doing with the superintendents, getting gathered to meet, to provide a platform to help share ideas and move our districts forward. So I attended the first one, and it was very nice. There's ten more forums taking place this far in various districts. Another note that we need to keep in mind is that while the, in connection to school funding, the state approval of the 2.45% and 2% in their budget, that actually falls short of projected inflation over the next two years. So that's going to be something that in the advocacy that we're going to be going through this next year, we're going to have to keep in mind, keep reminding our legislatures that there still going to be some funding challenges for our schools. And that doesn't even bring up the cross-subsidy gaps that are economy faced, too. And they're probably working on developing a legislative platform over the next several months. Dr. Bill Norris and Peter Welling gave a great presentation. I believe Bob shared the slide deck with all of you. And it was going over a year-over-year survey that was, the results that we concluded over August 9th through 16th. Basically, across the whole state, they're seeing a lot of polarization on all topics. And it's going to create a devastating and challenging dynamic for the next few years is kind of the base result. Bob, did you have anything to add to that? It's a great presentation, if I don't know if it was recorded or not.
I think it's recorded on the site.
I would highly recommend watching it then. And that's the end of the NSBA report.
Thank you, Tony. Julie, May?
We have May meeting Monday evening, and the best part of the meeting was the mission moment, was Shelley Mitchell sharing her adaptive fire. She's the teacher of the year, and she just shared stories about being the adaptive fire There really wasn't anything else to share. They just found a fire phone drive leader, and so that could be coming. So they just have one person working on it right now. So that's really it.
Thank you.
For NSBA, the advocacy tour was last week, February. Julie, Kevin and I attended. There is a legislative summary available on the NSBA website to look at everything that happened last year. And then Coffee and Conversations is tomorrow morning at 8:15, if you want to connect with board members from across the metro area. Kevin, 9/16.
All right, I want to back up and report to Tony. No, I'm kidding. All right, so Bob and I had a wonderful meeting, I thought, with Valerie Bowe, the new superintendent of 9/16. And there, that's who's special ed coordinator for 9/16. I thought it was nice to get us all in the same space to talk about each, it's a 13-member collaborative, as you, I'm sure, know. But each of the districts has its different needs. Amadou Diaye has specialized, you know, needs that are unique to Amadou Diaye. And so one of the things I was taken by was just this idea that 9/16 was helping us keep our students that are in tier three in our schools. So they would bring in people to help work with our staff. And if they did need to come to 9/16, this idea of trying to speed that up so they could return back to our schools. So I thought that was good. I don't know, Bob, if you had anything you wanted to?
No, they've been super helpful in building our program.
No, they've been super helpful in building our, our programs here in the building so that we can be part of here instead of the nine sixteen program. So that's been, that's been great part of it.
We just got a joint powers agreement draft proposal, which came through, and I'm assuming that Jeff is probably going to go through it. Is Jeff here?
He's not here.
He's not here?
He hasn't.
Okay. And I believe the way that has to work is we have to, as a board, approve it, and then it goes back to nine sixteen.
It was coming to us at one point, and then they held off because a number of districts sounded very, it was a very complex formula, but they've simplified everything quite a bit. So that will be coming again, and we will need to approve it.
Nine sixteen education foundation is studying their follow-up drive work as is MFT, and so we have in the past, board members have supported the work of the nine sixteen education foundation. So if you see it and you'd like to support the nine sixteen, they would certainly appreciate. They do some really great stuff with it, as I know Stacy has been kind of champion of it over the years. So if you have an interest in that, I'm going to try to get something to send out, and then you can just do what you feel. A lot of policy work there. We did hire a new director of finance, and then Mark Comlin, who comes from Hudson originally. And what else did I have? That might be, that might be on my report.
Thank you.
Other board committees?
So tonight we met for facilities. So we got to meet Adam Demending, so that was exciting to get to meet him, and he shared a little bit with us about how we are the only school district, to his knowledge, separating organics from trash, and that.
In Washington County.
Yeah, I was going to add that. Yeah, in Washington County. Not ever.
World.
In the world. But so that was, that was great to hear. We got to hear about the summer projects, like at Wildwood with the update to LED lights, and fixing the roof areas in the high school and middle school. We've been roofing in Steel Cloud and that over the Chautauqua area, the leaky problems are all fixed, and the new seal coating, and replacing of over, I think he said, five thousand pavers. So, and then lastly, in that part, we also got to hear from Site Logic, and that they created a comprehensive facilities assessment about the physical needs, the educational needs, and the functional needs of a school district, and kind of putting together a plan for looking forward as to how to tackle those issues. Anything I missed about that?
No, except Mr. Anderson and Ms. Convenias were there, and they were very excited that they're having ideation meetings, including the teachers, on, on some of their concerns. And they'll, they'll have a dashboard as part of their program, and, you know, it will hopefully help address, you know, the, the super hot room, the super cold room, and everything, and issues for facilities. So it's a, it's a great presentation. And they, they project that they will save us two to six percent on a physical construction project.
I can share from the financial side of that meeting. We have a clean audit, and we're going to have basically the best, highest rating you can get. We have one little operational thing about separation of powers, which we've come to learn that every, every school district has that same issue, and we take as many steps as possible to minimize that being an issue. And it's, it's great news. I think we're one of the first districts to have it done, and I know Jeff is glad that's in the room here.
Thank you. Any other report, committees?
I'm going to briefly, we want to do a lot of the PTO things with the assessment days and fund runs and all that other stuff, but I do want to do a quick couple plugs for the PTO. The fund runs coming up, it's their biggest fundraiser. It's all hundred percent volunteer done, so a hundred percent of the donations that could then go way back into the classroom. And currently, this year, they're looking to get funding requests from teachers to support student enrichment. And they have about twenty thousand dollars they're looking to get directly back into classrooms this fall, so I was, that's very exciting. There's been a lot of joy and a lot of good feedback from parents, and one of the discussions they had was some of the good things that have come out over the last year, and it was really touching to hear parents talk about the agency their elementary students had and developed over this last year. And it's something that parents and teachers and staff and the whole group kind of went down, saying that, you know, students are capable of so much more than sometimes we think they are, and they're given the opportunity to have that agency, to see that growth. And that was really a highlight of something that all the parents shared from that meeting. So there's so many things that went over that came up early, and I'm trying to make sure I didn't miss something. Although one last thing I wanted to mention is that the PTO did help support during the assessment days, a free book for every student that went through. And that was a big hit, and they have the support and the structure to continue doing that in the years moving forward. So I just wanted to come down for putting all that work together.
Thank you. Last topic, may the board.
Seeing no other items, I'm ready to adjourn. Any further motion to adjourn, please?
移到了
Move by Kevin. Second by Stacy. I was in favor, please say aye.
Is it Stacy or Kevin?
Kevin.
Kevin.
I said Stacy.
Kelly and Stacy.
That's what you said, right?
Yeah. All right, there you go.
All right. Thank you, everyone.